We're ready. Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Leonard?
Present.
Councilman Popescu?
Here.
Mayor Potemory Duper?
Present.
Mayor Rixby?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. We will be starting with the successor agency agenda, but let's do the preliminaries. Start with the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilman Popescu. Please rise.
As a bow heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity you've given us to be in this amazing country and this wonderful state. We thank you for the city of Loma Linda and the opportunity you've given us to serve the community. We ask that you be with us this evening, help us to make wise decisions that we all may benefit. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move to the successor agency agenda at this time. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? This is your chance. Going, going, gone. Okay. Consent calendar.
Are we on the city council agenda?
Successor.
Okay. Can I move it?
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's unanimous. Now we go to new business, which is combined with the city council. Item three, council bill R-2015-37 approving the long-range property management plan. And whoever discusses?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Duquette, managing principal of the firm of Urban Futures Incorporated, and we're the consulting firm that prepared this plan that's before you. I would like to give you a little bit of background, probably first and foremost of which is, it's unfortunate the state, in Sacramento, the folks that decided they wanted to dissolve redevelopment agencies called this a plan. It's not really a plan in the sense of a general plan, a specific plan, that sort of thing. It does not have tactics-level information in it. So to the extent these kinds of plans deal with real estate transactions, in your case you have a few that are contemplated, this particular document does not actually give you step-by-step instructions, although it does have some general advice in it regarding what you might do. So just as an introductory remark, that's my comment about the document itself. I would ask you, I'd like you to go to page four and five of the plan, because this is really going to be the summary of what's in the detail, in that there are a separate chapter in this document consisting of one chapter per site. There are 13 parcels, seven sites altogether. In total, there's approximately 80 acres of land that your former redevelopment agency owned. And these types of plans allow properties to be placed in one of four baskets. There are two in this one. One is government use, so if a particular piece of property is actively in government use purposes, and for the most part, in this case, it's parks and recreation oriented, then it may be placed in the government use category, and the transfer can occur after approval by the Department of Finance between the successor agency and the city at no cost. And there is also a category for sell. There's two sites that would be sold. Those sites, by the way, have a combined estimated value of about $9 million. I would like to point out that as a requirement of preparing this kind of document, the preparers are required to list estimated current value. We get this information from an online database. It's not an appraisal, but it's just a general ballpark number. It really doesn't have any practical value, other than the Department of Finance requires it, so that's why it's in there. But I want to make sure it's clear to you that this is not an appraised value. There are two other categories. One would be to retain property for future development. That would be sites that were in the process of being assembled and then made available for specific development purposes with the private sector, and that particular project would need to be completed. That's not the case here. And then the fourth would be for enforceable obligations, meaning that you would have entered into a sale agreement prior to dissolution, and it was yet to be consummated. And that could be included in the plan as well. So each, you'll notice at the top, along the top bar in each of these pages, there's sections to, it's HSC section. If you were to look up those sections in the Health and Safety Code, you will actually see the information requirement. And although this is in summary form on this sheet, there's a narrative to support each one of these and each one of these chapters. My intent this evening is not to belabor it by walking you through each one unless you have a question about it. I'd be happy to do that. You became eligible to prepare and file a document like this with the Department of Finance as a result of clearing two very highly specialized and highly focused audit-like reports. They were called due diligence reviews. One was on your general redevelopment fund, and the other one was on your low and modern income housing fund. Those reviews were completed, and they were approved by the Department of Finance, and you received a letter that's called a finding of completion, or an FOC, a finding of completion, just this last August. So this is right near where we are now. And by the way, the law requires that the plan be approved by the Department of Finance by December 31st. Now, we're about seven weeks out from that happening. And I understand your oversight board will review this matter shortly. And once they do, then this document and that resolution will go to the Department of Finance. I highly recommend that the staff follow up directly with your Department of Finance analyst and others to make sure this gets reviewed. Frankly, this is a very plain vanilla plan. Where Department of Finance spends the most time in reviewing these has to do with future development sites, the complications associated with that. That is not the case here. Straight, clear government use, and some for-sale properties that will ultimately be managed in the future. I mentioned the plan does not have a tactics-level guide, but it does include, as Exhibit A, some disposition procedures relative to how that might be handled. I would like to point out that when, the hope is that you would adopt this plan this evening, you are not adopting this as a policy. This is only a guide from which your staff can use as a beginning point to bring back to you what their plans are for the two sites that are included in this plan that would be sold. The redevelopment dissolution law does not require that you conduct a fire sale. So there's no urgent need to immediately sell them, but it does suggest that you would do your normal amount of due diligence with respect to when the timing might be right, and your staff is very much aware of that. So we believe that you will hear from them later on. Could be all at once, could be one at a time, it just depends on the circumstances that would be involved in each particular site. So that summarizes what is in this plan, and it is responsive completely to the requirements of the Health and Safety Code. This is a dying business, by the way. As I mentioned, these have to be approved by December 31st. This is our 19th and final plan, and I predict it will be approved as long as you make a few follow-up phone calls. Now, if they don't return your call, there's a few other things you can do. I would start with your assembly member, I mean, I'm seriously, start with your assembly member and state senator. There's a particular lady that I would recommend that you speak to. She's very influential. Her name is Katie Colitzos. She's a special assistant to the Speaker of the Assembly, and when Katie makes a call to Department of Finance, the head guy answers the phone, and whatever is at the bottom of the stack goes to the top of the stack. I mentioned the name. It's one of those with few letters but hard to spell, and if you need to do that, we'll certainly help you in that regard. We know all the folks over there, too. But there shouldn't be a problem with getting this approved, especially with follow-up. So that summarizes the presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you might have about any matter in this document.
With all due respect, I feel like we just hit the fast-forward button, and I'm trying to keep up. And so my question is of staff. Have you carefully reviewed this, and you're familiar with all of the content?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I did the initial report, and I passed it on to them to finalize and put in the format that Department of Finance likes to see, so it's mine.
I am informed that special counsel wishes to say a few words.
Only a few. The long-range property management plan is a pretty wooden document. The only reason you do it is because redevelopment law, dissolution law says to. I don't think it's a particularly useful document, but it is, in terms of checking the box, this should suffice. It contains the information that's required, and while, as Steve Duquette presented it, it's, you know, in a simplified way, there are only two categories. We gave thought to putting properties in the retained-for-future redevelopment, but we didn't see that as having any advantages for the community, because what that requires you do then if you sell them is to enter into compensation agreements with all the taxing agencies, which seemed like a needless step. If you put it on the block, take the sale back to the oversight board, you dispense with that step. So, you know, I reviewed the plan, I have reviewed some other plans that Urban Futures has prepared, and so, you know, what was done here is reflective of what evolved in a couple of other agencies. A reason that the plan comes here later than it did for several other agencies is that Loma Linda was precluded from obtaining a finding of completion and adopting such a plan because of litigation that was pending regarding re-entered agreements that was settled in Loma Linda's favor. So I think overall, the plan is in good shape. The plan doesn't have very much to do with what values the properties were actually garner on the open market, or how the staff will go about presenting these for sale, and obviously that will be done in a way to achieve the greatest advantage for the city as possible. So, quick and dirty, that's what the plan is, and again, Steve, I'll, you have to answer any questions.
Just as a final comment, we don't do these things standalone, and there are several members of my staff that prepared it. One is here this evening, Kathleen Robles, and I would give her special recognition and thank you for doing this. Aviana Valades also assisted. We had tremendous assistance for every single person we interfaced with the city, starting with your city manager, Jarb. The kickoff meeting was unbelievable. The promises of delivery were made, and every single one was made. It made our job easy to do, so we appreciate that very much.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions. In the process of disposition of the properties, it looks like there's a couple of options. Is the staff, have they agreed as to which option they're going to pursue?
Well, for example, the Area D, I think Conrad has been working with a lot of potential developers that are interested in buying it, so we can have a bidding war, won't you? So, go ahead.
Actually, the two properties that would be disposed of are the city property in Area D and the corner of Redlands and Richardson, and we've had a lot of interest from developers for both those properties. So we'll probably end up putting those into some type of an auction or some type of a bid, so that we can maximize our profit from that.
Well, the reason I ask is I do like option two, which is request for, kind of like an RFP, that goes to much detail as to what exactly they're planning on doing, how they go about doing it, and that in itself, you know, adds some depth to whether it's somebody we should pursue, not just the fact of, you know, highest bidder.
Correct. Yeah, we're looking for the best return over time, not the most money.
Exactly. So, and the other question I had is, the proceeds from the sale of these lands, what happens to it?
Yes, the proceeds of sale would be submitted to the auditor controller, and the auditor controller will distribute those funds to the taxing entities in proportion to their portion of the general tax, the 1% tax levy. So, and the city is a, does receive a portion of the general tax levy, and will receive a portion of the land sale proceeds.
It's, as with many cities, the city share is about a dime on a dollar, and it underscores, you know, your earlier question having to do with the manner in which property would be disposed of. If you just put it on the block to the highest bidder, you know, do what you want, waste transfer station, public storage, it doesn't matter, the city gets 10 cents on a dollar. The city's stake is much greater in future revenue streams and in how the property is used. So, we wanted to retain flexibility for city staff on how they marketed the property before they brought something back to the successor agency, and if the successor agency would approve it, then it would go to the oversight board. So we wanted to leave that flexibility, but mindful of achieving the greatest return to the city. And return to the city is, you know, both long-term revenues and uses that are beneficial and compatible, and not necessarily the highest nominal sales price.
And just a follow-up question on that. Has your company done similar plans like this for other cities before?
Yes, this is our 19th plan.
And?
And there are actually four that are in the mix right now. They have all been approved by DOF, once they have gotten to that particular level. And so we anticipate, especially in this case, because this is a very straightforward one, all of your land uses are in the most simplest to review by DOF folks category. So it should go pretty quickly.
And once it gets approved, what's the timeframe between the ability to actually put it to market?
Well, once it gets approved, you can act as soon as you wish. Now, I would suggest the first thing you do is you do all the government transfers. Do them as quickly as you can, and those you won't need any more approvals, just between the successor agency and the city. Quick claim deed and certificate of acceptance, you're ready to go.
And then, does the state not have any say at all into the procedures after that?
Well, as Mr. Hibbs pointed out, for sale property, that transaction, once it would be approved, at the successor agency level, needs to go to the oversight board for approval. You still have a local oversight board through June 2017. If any of these are delayed beyond that time, then they would have to go to the countywide oversight board, then Department of Finance, for their approval. Now, this is what they're going to look at, it's pretty simple. You're selling the land, you got an appraisal to back it up. If the answer is yes, approved, we move down the road. However, this is Department of Finance. It could take them 90 days to do that. So there are some issues that have to be worked through, but I'd say the less complication, the shorter the review period. And this is, there are other jurisdictions that are already in the implementation phase. So there are folks at Department of Finance that relate directly to this issue, so it's not like they're completely new to it. Whereas when we began the wind-down process, they were borrowing staff from other departments. It was like talking to the wall. So now, we still talk to the wall, but it's made out of glass. You can actually see through it.
In terms of getting outside the jurisdiction of DOF, which is not a bad thing for any living creature, on the governmental-use properties, when they're approved, you transfer by deed outside their jurisdiction, really when they approve the plan, I would agree that it would be good to promptly deed them over from the city qua successor agency to city qua city, because heaven knows when the legislature will change the rules yet again. On the for-sale properties, there really aren't any deadlines on when they get sold. So it would be a matter of the staff's sound judgment on how best to market those, and it gives them a full range. You know, one of the problems of proceeding to quickly sell, which the legislature recognized before they enacted 1484, was the fear of a fire sale. Well, the solution, unfortunately, from the Department of Finance is to avoid a fire sale, you had to do this plan that you, most people couldn't enact for a year, so it was almost effectively an injunction on anyone doing anything, which may have been frustrating for counties and water districts and others who only share in the proceeds. But I think this will put the successor agency on a sound footing in terms of processing the governmental, and the governmental are pretty clearly governmental, like fire station, park, open space, and then on the other properties, positioning those that staff can just chip away at those and try to achieve the best results possible. Once those are approved to sale and the sale is effected, it's out of the DOF review process entirely. They have made certain statements at various times. They won't review individual sales if they're included in the long-range property management plan. I take that with a grain of salt. It's hard for me to think that no one will care to review a sale to see if it is in conformity with the plan or not. But the sales would be in conformity with the plan, which is one reason we've left the plan rather flexible. So when people, when the successor agency comes up with a specific deal, it can be presented to the board of the successor agency, taken to the oversight board, and they can approve it or not. If they don't approve them, you're just left to re-market the properties. In the case of Area D, there should be a market for those properties. There are some agencies with properties which are irregularly shaped, tiny 60-degree slopes. I have no idea how anyone thinks those are going to be sold, sold anytime soon or for any particular price. So we have included, you know, these computerized data estimated values, but there's no telling what price someone will actually pay on the open market. DOF, for another agency, Montclair, did not approve in obtaining of appraisals as an allowable enforceable obligation, so there's really no reason to do that, plus it's just setting an expectation. So, anyway, if there are any other questions.
Okay, is there a motion then?
I'll move approval of council bill R-2015-37.
Second. Okay, what's the procedure? This is one of those that just requires a majority vote? Okay. No reading, title only, or any of that stuff? Okay. You'd think we'd know that after this many years. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's unanimous, it's approved. And that reaches the end of the agenda for the successor agency. We will go back to the city council agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda, other than those who have submitted a public comment card? Come forward, Mr. Swigert.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kurt Swigert. Live at 26253 Crest Haven Court, Loma Linda. I'd like to start off tonight by thanking everyone. City council, Jarb, your staff, and the sheriff's department for doing an excellent job. You guys have done an outstanding job the last, I mean, we've been in this city for 26-plus years. It's refreshing, over the past few years, how nice the city has been run. There's been no controversy, there's been no drama, it's just been run beautifully. It's really nice, been very refreshing. Along with a couple of my neighbors, you know, we've been involved on the budget committee. I've been on the Parks and Recreation Committee for the past probably 20 years, and everything has been really nice. About six weeks ago, things have kind of gone haywire. In front of my house, my son's car hauling trailer was stolen, right out of my front, right out of, off the street in front of my house, between 8:00 in the morning and 12:00 Has never been found. It wasn't insured, kid's no better. It's been replaced, it's now bolted down to the pine tree and insured, and we have a new one now. Three weeks later, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there was a TV and a laptop stolen between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM. It was recovered the next day at, they were trying to hawk it, in Colton. They caught the thieves that did it. Then, this past Thursday, we had an issue with our community mailbox. It was destroyed. In talking to the officer who was taking the report, he said that we've had 15 to 20 of the community mailboxes destroyed. It's really alarming. It's horrible. I mean, I can't even leave my garage door open anymore without my wife having a heart Loma Linda is really a safe community. We love living here. I mean, for years and years and years, I'll be really honest with you, we don't see units up in our area, and it's never been an issue, because we don't have crime in our area. But more and more, you see it. We had a community meeting probably three or four weeks ago with two of our blocks. We had 100% participation. Everybody attended, and I thought we'd had maybe four, five, or six incidents. We had 15 to 20, because we hadn't been talking in the last couple of years, of just thievery, people's houses being broken into. I got a phone call Sunday afternoon, and I was told that Saturday morning at 9:00, a husband, wife, and her two kids on the corner house left for church. The mother, who does not speak English, was still in the house. Her dog was barking and going crazy. She's beating on the window, and somebody stood up in the backyard and looks her straight in the eye, scares the dickens out of her, and takes off running in her backyard, two houses away from my house, 9:00 in the morning. Now, this house was hit exactly two years ago, same situation, right after they left for church. Their house was ransacked, and everything was thrown all over the house. We need help. I know the sheriff's department is doing a really good job. They're catching a lot of people out here, but we need more officers on the streets. I don't, I don't know what else to say at this point. We just need a lot more people on the streets. I know that our city is doing really good financially, a lot better than most in the area, and I think we can afford putting another officer on the streets here. I keep looking back there, and I'm, you know, and I've talked to a number of the officers on the streets, because I'm retired now, and I'm just strolling around with my grandson, and I've gotten to know a lot of them, and I'm not going to mention any names, but everybody's very open, very friendly, and everybody's doing a good job. But you don't see enough of them on the streets, at least in my area. And I think pretty much we live in a very nice area, and the bad guys know we live in a nice area, and it's free-picking, and they're coming up here and they're just taking what they want, because there's nobody to stop them. And I think we need some consideration. We need some help. I mean, I'm even offering to get on citizen patrol.
Do you have your number?
You got my number? Let me see if I missed anything here. I don't want to read the, my grocery list my wife gave me. You guys have any questions?
Well, we're not allowed to do a whole lot of discussion for public comment, but it seems to me your plea is falling on sympathetic ears in terms of the problem. You know, you know about our situations where we've been robbed as well, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I remember that. And Jarb's next-door neighbor. Thanks to Jarb's nice video system, they were, he was caught.
So, we thank you for your comment. We will- We will talk about, we'll talk to staff about things, but we can't do much about it today.
I understand, it was an unadmitted item, but...
But I think we can give direction to staff to put an item on the agenda so we can have a discussion, and maybe look at, you know, we've had basically a report given to us not long ago about the amount of crime, to try to compare it, and we have seen an uptick over the years, perhaps not year over year, depending on the type of crime. We've made some adjustments to it, but it's worthwhile to look at it again and make additional adjustments, but in order to, you know, follow the stupid Brown Act, we have to put it on the agenda, we can talk to you about it. So, we'll have to bring it back, but I think what I would like to have, you know, staff look at is give us an alternative, some ideas, you know, whether it be extra officers, extra patrols, something, so we have something to discuss and then come out with the best alternative.
Mr. Dorsey has a comment?
Yes, sir.
Captain Dorsey.
Is it, is it working, sir?
It is.
The, I think the council and the city manager was very aggressive and saw this coming with the Prop 47 in November. We had some indication, because it was a change in the laws, that a lot of crime that was keeping people in prison no longer is, and then you have realignment on top of that, and now you have the federal government thinking it's a good idea to let a lot of people out, so you have a lot of people out roaming around that should have been in jail or should be in jail. In July, the council did add an extra deputy sheriff, and we are rolling between seven AM and eleven o'clock at night, three officers in the city, but they are staying extremely busy. We're hovering the last two months, around five hundred-plus calls a week, which is extremely busy for the Loma Linda area. The burglary that JARB assisted us with, we were able to arrest those individuals. And to show that it's just not a Loma Linda problem, it's a global inland empire problem, is we were able to arrest those subjects in the beautiful city of Rancho Cucamonga, where they had committed some crimes, as well as crimes in Colton, Redlands, and Highland. So it's just not a criminal element saying, "I'm going to pick and win jurisdiction," due to the wonderful freeway systems we have in the area. They're able to commit a crime and then go to another jurisdiction and commit another crime. So we're trying to be very aggressive. We have deployed some officers in an undercover manner in the south end of the cities where the burglaries are occurring. Unfortunately, the mailboxes is a global problem. We've done some recent press releases about, there's basically three options: don't use it, convince the mailman to deliver it to your house like they used to, we know what's going to happen with that one, or make sure you get it out as soon as you can when you get home. And I've taken the, I don't use it at my house, and I've purchased a mailbox at the post office. The reason why this has upticked in crime with the change in Prop 47, it's now a misdemeanor. So if somebody gets caught stealing your mail, it's simply a misdemeanor crime, they get a citation or go to jail for eight hours, as well as identity theft. That's why they're stealing your mail, to steal your identity, that's been changed to a misdemeanor too. So there's a lot of opposing forces which are just creating a huge problem. There's now a push, LA County Sheriff's, as well as Orange County DA's office, is trying to reverse some of this Prop 47 damage. But I truly appreciate your comments. The guys here are working very hard. I got to compliment the city council for giving us another officer. We did do evaluation in July, we saw a slight uptick, but we're going to wait and see what happens, and I'll work with the city manager and see what we can do for you.
Okay. Well, you know, even, it's just been, I mean, it's been so nice here, and just to see a little bit of ugliness is really bad. I mean, even when we have a little bit of an uptick, the officers that we've had in the past have always done a really good job of being able to catch them. No matter what they've done, we've always been able to catch them, but if we can get on the front end of it, I think we'd be a lot better off. And the last one that we added, was that just putting us back to par where we were before we cut the one?
It's not even fully put us back, because we cut a full-time position and all we did was add an overtime spot to put it back.
Okay, so we're not back to where we were originally, then?
We're at the point where we need to add more boxes, but I need to be careful instead, so I'm trying to hold it tight, but that's the reality.
Okay, because, because I know we went down from where we were.
And we, the average weekly arrest is about eighteen a week out of the city. Now, it's been some weeks where we're hitting twenty-five arrests a week.
Yeah, when I, when I talked to the post office manager, he had said that he was asking for the help from the FBI and from the postmaster general, because he said the number of officers were not adequate to address the issues here.
The theft of mail from a community mailbox is not a federal crime.
Yeah.
So the FBI is not going to help, that's why the post office is not going to...
Yeah, okay.
It's occurring in every single city, so I can pretty much guarantee you the FBI is not going to help.
Yeah. Yeah. I contacted the manufacturer of the post office boxes, and tomorrow I'm writing a check for seventeen hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and he sent me a couple pictures of other post office boxes that have been vandalized here in Loma Linda too. He's got a ton of boxes he's replacing here.
You know, I'll, we can get on the soapbox for a second.
Let me get on this political soapbox for a second. This is what, this is what happens, this is the result of the forward-thinking, where we try to rehabilitate people instead of actually punishing them for crimes. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to some type of, some types of rehabilitation, but we're losing ground in this state, and it's not just this town. The reality is, is we're surrounded by a lot of less fortunate cities with a lot of problems, and we can't put up gates at our entrances and exits. And you're absolutely a hundred percent right, we need everybody in the city to understand where all that is and support the council, and then support the city in making, hardening the target. A colleague likes to refer that to, is hardening the target, let's make some other city the easy place for them to go to. But you're absolutely on the right track. And I know the captain can allude to some of this stuff too, it's really unfortunate, but now, nowadays, if, if one of our deputies takes somebody to the hospital for a psych eval, there goes the entire shift. It used to be a one-hour thing, now it can be upwards of an eight-hour thing. If they go to the jail, the booking process has now changed so dramatically that it takes them four hours at the jail and they're gone. The medical center and the ER, the best ER here in the area, brings everybody else's problems, and then our deputies in this city have to go hang out there at the ER to make sure they're safe. The medical center needs to step up, and this is where I'm going to, again, be vocal, they need to contribute too, they're users here in the city, and they tax our resources, so...
Is the citizen patrol a good option? Is that something we could bolster and...
It is, but nothing makes up for a gun-toting police officer, and it doesn't matter what agency they are, it doesn't matter...
We have a very active citizen patrol unit, it's about sixty-eight people right now.
Really?
Always looking for more volunteers.
I've never, I've never seen one in my area either.
We have, in particular, two gentlemen that come out for about four hours, five days a week.
Really?
And they go through all of our jurisdictions, being Grand Terrace and Loma Linda.
Do you need more?
Absolutely, we always need help.
How do I, how do I get involved?
I could get with you when we're done here.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, there's another request from Eileen Christensen Torres.
My name is Eileen, as you all know by now. Last year, I won the LA Pasadena San Bernardino Miss Pre-Teen Beauty Pageant Contest, and I'm representing Loma Linda this month, this next month, in the national finals in Orlando, Florida on December thirteenth. And as you, like me, know, an all-expense-paid award doesn't mean there are no other expenses. Tonight, I'm asking the residents of Loma Linda to support me with whatever amount they can donate. If they are willing to make any donations, please stop by the Loma Linda Antique Mall on Redlands Boulevard across from Hometown Buffet. And thank you for your time, and I will make you guys proud. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Glad to have someone representing us. Wish you the best. Okay, next we have the consent calendar. I move. Any further discussion? Any opposition? I'm going to try that voting technique. Hearing none, that's approved unanimously. The consent calendar. No old business, the new business, we have an El Nino storm presentation, city manager, and certified meteorologist.
No, not quite. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you've been watching the news and reading newspaper, it always talk about El Ninos and what we plan to do. So, last month, we get together with the different departments, including the sheriff, the fire department, public works, finance, and come up with a plan of what we plan to do for the upcoming El Ninos winter rain this year. So what we did was, we went back and looked at the rain that we had back in 2010, which a lot of you were here at that time. So we identified approximately ten locations that had problem back in 2010, and then we went over what we planned to do. So, the first one that we will talk about is at the intersection of Van Leuven and Orange Grove, and also the flood at the academy. Last month, I did, went and had a meeting with Mr. Doc Herman, with the Loma Linda Academy, and went over his issues that he had on campus. And one issue that he has is the drain inlet is, is on campus, is a little at-grade inlet. So every time it rains, we have some debris that clog that inlet. So I recommend that they replace the flat inlet with the cage or the pipe, so that when the debris clogs the bottom part, the water still come in on the top part. So they're planning to do that, one right at the entrance, not at the front door, because the front door we could trip over, but right at the southeast corner of the building, and another one at the inlet at the parking lot in the back. The other problem that they have is the existing pipe that they have around the campus is only a twelve-inch pipe. And to do it right, they have to enlarge that pipe, and it's going to be very difficult to do. So, another challenge that they have is the pipe that outlet into the San Timoteo Channel is, their pipe is almost at the bottom of the channel. So that means that when it rains, when there's water in the channel, the level, the water surface is above the outlet, and so it's going to take a lot of pressure from the pipe to push the water into the channel. So that is, is another challenge that they have. So what we plan to do is, we plan to help them take the water away from Anderson and Orange Grove area. I had a meeting with Ken Brier with the university, where the university can build a berm along the east side of Orange Grove. In addition to the berm, it create a little holding for water to prevent the water from go over the Orange Grove and the dirt from this field to go on to the Orange Grove and academy. In addition, at the location of Van Leuven and Orange Grove, there is a county flood control channel along here, that every time it rains, have attendees to clog up the inlet. So, every time it rains, we have assign a city public work staff to man that location, just to make, that's the first thing we do, is come out and check this location. In addition to that, we're going to install the cash basin at the parking lot here and put another pipe into the existing box covert, so that in case that this thing pluck up, this overflow that can go into the cash basin and go into the existing storm drain pipe, they come out to the open channel here and run along the south or the west half of the academy. That's what we plan to do for this location. I'm currently doing design for the storm drain right now. We plan to go out to inform a bid, and hopefully by December, I will bring it back for the city council to award the contract. Pardon me? A week?
A week?
Yes, it shouldn't take very long. And what we're doing is, I'm going to take advantage of, put the pipe in the park area itself, in the ground, in the soft dirt area. This belonged to the university, so I had a meeting with Ken Brier and get his permission from the university and to build that storm drain at that location.
Quick question?
Yes.
The drainage dish that runs on Van Leuven that gets blocked up over there, right there?
Yes.
Do we not control that?
No, it's belong to the county flood control. As a matter of fact, I've been meeting with them and asking to come out and clean it.
Okay, so because part of the issue is that because it's not cemented, it tends to pick up a lot of junk, and that's why it gets plugged up?
And what happening is, if you see this, the drainage dish behind the drainage center, that is also create a lot of debris, and...
And who, who controls that?
The whole thing is within the railroad right away. And so, for me, for the city to go in and clean that, I had to get permission from the railroad, which is this next slide here. This is Benton. We have a storm drain that come out of Benton and come out to the open ditch right here. Okay? So we are having worked with the railroad, they came out, met with me, but then I tried to get back to them to get permission, they just stopped responding to my email. So, what I like to do is, to get the contractor to come out, remove the trees, but, and get the, get the railroad to waive the inspection fee and permit fee, because to work in that railroad right away, it require flagmen, and it's cost a lot of money, and I'm hoping to work with them and for them to waive the fee and for us to go in and remove the trees to trim them.
So, you do, I would imagine, do plan on following up with the railroad?
Oh, yes. Yes, definitely.
Can't completely remove the trees?
No, no, it will thin it up. It costs a lot of money to remove.
I know, but I think, I think the drainage center and all that kind of lies on that as an artificial...
Yes.
Yeah, but there's stuff on the other side that goes inside the ditch, I just, it's all brunt, there's no ditch, it's all...
Well, I got it, but people would be upset if we took those trees out.
No, yeah, well, I think what he's referring to is the stuff in the ditch itself, which isn't the...
We, we got to thin it, we, we got to thin it, we're not going to remove all of them, because it's part of habitat too. The main, the goal is, is to extend the storm drain, we should have had a plan for, to tunnel the storm drain underneath the railroad track, come across this proposed apartment complex here, and tie it to the existing storm drain outlet at San Timoteo. Now, the reason I cannot do this yet is because, at first, when the apartment came in and the city council approved their project, they were supposed to give us a storm drain easement to go across, but now the project is on hold, so haven't get that part, but in the meantime, I'm going to take care of cleaning it. Next is at University Mobile Home Park in Oakwood. What happened at this location, this is, this is University Avenue that tied to Barton Road. Oakwood is right here. What we plan to do is, we plan to put a K-rail across with some sandbag to stop the dirt from coming from this south part right here. Mr. Willibert owned that property, so I've been contacting him, so do some erosion control this location. Also, in addition, the water will, when it come down, Oakwood, it will go across Barton Road to University Avenue here, where there's a low spot with the cash basin, and the cash basin take the water into this Mobile Home Park and dump it out right here to the Cash Canal Channel. So, what we have done is, we cleaned up the channel, we cleaned up this, if you notice, we already cleaned up the trees and shrubs and bushes along the north side of University Avenue, and what we plan to do is keep it clean and station some K-rail barricade at this location, just in case the intersection flood, we can close off that intersection. Next is Marview Plaza, this is the case that we have litigation and settled last, earlier this year. So what we plan to do is, we put a barricade and some sandbag to get ready, and we work with the property owner. What happened last time was, all the floodwaters coming in here and entered the... What happened last time was, all the flood waters coming in here and entered their self storage place, and pretty much stay in their place, because there's block wall all the way around, with a small opening at about right here. They removed that block wall and put in wrought iron fence, so now it rain, the water can come across, come out, and go into the cash basin at this location and go into a pipe that come across. So, they're taking care of. In addition to that, we take care of upstream, okay? This is the tennis court, this is the Mountain View basin. What happening is, the two temporary drainage area, one to the southeast, another one to the southwest corner. So, this basin right here take care of this drainage over here, but we have some small part that will come behind the tennis court and come out to the storm drain pipe over here. We work with the expert witness, the engineer that help us with the self-storage place. We came up with the idea of putting the debris netting, it's a steel metal netting that will put across the canyon. It turned out that will cost about $100,000 a piece to engineer an anchor into the hill. We came up, the staff came up with a better idea, where we clean up the basin, we create a little basin, we're gonna build the called Gabion Wall, which is the wire mesh cage, and we put a rock inside. The cage we already ordered from Northern California, it's gonna be delivered, it's lightweight, we can set it down, and we will purchase the rock from the white water right here and build it, fill it in. What this does is, is stop the debris from going downhill, but only allow the water to go through, at the same time reduce the energy. So, we can install this, not just at this location, we install it upstream in stages to prevent the mud and debris from coming down and reduce the energy for the water that coming out. The basin is pretty much dug, and by this month, I will have this done. And again, it done by public work staff.
So, when you say that it'll be staged, you'll have multiple of these walls?
Yes, sir, upstream. Yes. The whole idea is, you have to reduce the energy of water. Next is this area at the end of Pecan Way, Almond Court, Wellersley. Willaber, I'm sorry, Willaber. This is at the end of Almond Court where Dr. Fenu's house got hit pretty bad. So, what we plan to do, being all this is private property, so I cannot get onto the private property. So, what we plan to do, it put some sandbag and erosion control on the street to reduce the energy of water that come down. We plan to put a K-rail in front of her house, stage it, and if we have a big rain, we can bring it all the way across, on the, we can put on the sidewalk, just so that the car not gonna run into it. We plan to stage the sandbag along Willaber and Pecan Way, and the water will come all the way down to Lawton, where Lawton have some low spot that I'm gonna get ready for, put some sandbag and get ready for, we already clean all the cash basin and storm drain this area also. Okay, back in 2010, at Hummingbird and Amherst, this is Beaumont Avenue. The water come down from the canyon and go east on Beaumont and make a quick turn, where there's existing cash basin right here, existing cash basin at the end of Hummingbird, that come out to the channel along the railroad channel right here. So, we already cleaned that channel. The way the storm drain system over here was designed, was that it designed, the path is higher than inlet, and there's a spillway, so in case the cash basin clogged up, the water can go over the cash basin and go over the swell, in the swell between the houses and went into the channel, and it work. It worked, we're supposed to, last time, the housing get flooded, but the street is flood, but the system work. So, what we plan to do is, again, put a K-rail, station it, so that even in case we have to close the street off to let the water go east instead of turn, we can do that. And if we have to close the intersection at Beaumont by the railroad track, we can do that, we get ready. So, we will have public works and a search team from the fire department stage at different location when they have a heavy rain, and will be there to take care of it. So, what have we done so far? We already clicked, yes, sir.
On that, that Amherst-Hummingsburg one, is it possible to slightly change the grade of the intersection so that?
No.
That would be a natural block to flow?
No, to, to, yes, I look at that, to make it a big hum.
Yeah.
Yes.
Why not, why not?
Let me double check, but I.
It's permanent, you know, if you get the K-rail out there, five minutes too late, it's over.
Well, but again, the storm drain system work, it work, we're supposed to, but I just, what happened last time is all the dirt that came down, so I'm hoping that we're gonna stop the dirt from coming down from the hill before it get to it, so. But I can look into.
I don't know, just natural?
Yes.
Flow patterns, if you, I think it was a mistake that that thing was graded so that the water would turn left and the mud would turn left.
Yes.
So, you'd think you could correct that mistake.
Or maybe, maybe put a cross, got a cross and see where the water going, yes, okay.
When it rains hard, we just close that road.
Pardon me?
So, if you close that road, if it rains hard, then block that off with sandbag, I guess that'd be one alternative, if it hits that point.
Yes.
Because it just becomes a natural river over there, that's why.
That's kind of surprising too, it's happened. Okay, so, we already cleaned every detention basin. Prior to clean, we take a picture before, during and after, we document everything now, that's a lesson we learned from the lawsuit. We cleaned all the cash basin and the storm drain pipe. We install, we will be installing the cash basin and the storm drain at the end of Van Louven and Academy, install a sandbag and erosion control device at various locations. We'll be doing tree trimming and tree removal. What happening is, we have big eucalyptus tree, pine trees that fell last time and fell onto people's houses or the car, so what we planned, what we did was, we hire Aubrey, he came out already and checked our pine trees and eucalyptus trees along Hinkley, Mountain View, Redlands Boulevard where we used to live, all those big pine trees that we can be trimmed or remove, and same thing with the eucalyptus trees along the walkway between Beaumont and George Street, so I'm doing that right now. We can, we have, we're gonna purchase additional K-rail and load closure barricade, prepare a detour plan. This is important, we plan to prepare a detour plan and give it to the sheriff, so that deputy will have it to the fire department, so they will have it, what happened if Barton Road is closed, Mountain View is closed where they're supposed to go. We also work with the city cordon, because what happened last time was Barton Road at the, at. University, Barton Road in the city cordon, the. At Waterman, east, where's the Waterman, where the water is like four feet deep, and Sierra Village, Fiesta Village is flooding pretty bad. So, we had to create a detour, so that in case it flood, they can use Waterman, they can use, they cannot use California, because California is flooded too, so more likely to use Alabama. So, Waterman, Mountain View, and Alabama, yes, sir.
No question, it's just that the storm drain in front of the faculty medical offices on Barton Road.
Yes.
Plugged up really early and caused a huge flood through there, and you'll probably clean those out.
Yes, I will double check that. We're gonna, we plan the, we plan to rent standby equipment, we already have front-end loaders, equipment that we have, but just in case that major storm, a big event, we can have equipment ready here at the city yard, because you know, when it happen, everybody gonna go rent the equipment, I want to make sure we have it at the yard, here. We have a list of the standby contractor, even though right now I have on my cellphone, but I want to create a list, so that other people can use it and call the contractor and have agreement beforehand with these contractors, bunch of local. Have a sandbag repair. This weekend, we had a search team that came out to the city yard and practiced how to fill the sandbag, and they made four or five pallet of sandbag. So, those sandbag will be available at the city yard, at the fire station number one and two. It will be inside the gate, because when we leave it outside, somebody come by and take the whole pallet, it's happened. And another thing is, we're gonna activate the handheld radio system, so that's also coming, yes, sir.
Back to the Van Louven addition, suggestions, you included university building that berm, do you have any idea when they're gonna do that?
It should be this month, let me follow it with Ken.
Okay.
Yes. So, the item next to this is, I'd like to appropriate some money, ask you for additional money to purchase the K-rail to do tree trimming and remove the trees, and Councilman Daly will ask me where the money coming from to appropriate those money. I have a good news, that last month, we completed the audit for the last fiscal year, which I'm gonna bring the full report to you next month. What happened last fiscal year was, was that the revenue came in at seven percent more than what we budgeted, and our expenditure came in at five and a half percent less than what we budgeted, so that's total of 12 and a half percent, that's $2 million of surplus last year. So, don't spend on police yet, but, so, so what I could do is, is start spending that part of my.
Get eight new officers.
Yeah, so, what I'd like to do is, is spend, is, is, is a one-time money, and I'd like to spend it on, get this repaired and some of the deferred maintenance that we have, so.
So, what is the amount that you want to spend?
That, about $280, $289, that's the next item.
On the next item, but it wasn't broken up the way you just described it here. All I saw was $90,000 for flood improvement, and that was it.
No, it's $75,000 for repair traffic signal.
That's not flood related.
Well, I'm, $90,000 for El Nino, $67,000, and repair facilities include the roofing that we need to repair, and 50 is a low estimate for tree trimming and remove some big trees.
So, I know you're saying 282, but it's only 90,000 for El Nino planning.
Yes.
The rest is non-El Nino planning, so it's not really 282.
It's a tree trimming.
That's why it's a separate item.
Yes.
Number nine.
That's why I broke it down to A, B, C, D.
Am I looking at the wrong item? Yeah, I'm looking at number nine, number nine is 282,000.
He's on number eight.
No, what happened, did he get that in a second?
No, but he's telling us the number eight is related to number nine, and he's spending $282,000 on the things you just described, and I'm telling you that in the next.
Yeah, only 90 of it is from.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say. No, I'm looking at it, I'm seeing the same thing.
Oh, okay.
He just said, in the next item, there's some money in there I want to get through.
I know, but I'm correcting you, it's not 282,000, 282 is a total of a bunch of stuff, only 90.
Well, the trees are flood related, right?
Yes, sir.
And the, and the 90,000, so it's 140 of it is.
Yes, yes. Again, I bring this up, because just in case you're gonna ask me where the money coming from, I just gave it to you. Okay, so that's just the report, we prepare.
So, you're telling us that the budget shows a surplus of $2 million, I will only spend 140,000 on El Nino, I want to make sure I'm clear on that.
There might be some other item, but right tonight, I'm only ask for this much.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to come here and ask for 2 million, you're gonna kick me out of the account, I mean. I just, you know, I just be prepared, that's all, I'm, yes.
Okay, number nine. Move the item.
Just information, the report is information.
Number nine is not. Number nine is an actual motion. Yeah, it's an action, so I'm moving.
Do you, do you have any further report on number nine, are you done? Okay, so there's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, appropriation of $282,000. Council Bill R-2015-38, item number 10. Assistant City Manager, please.
This is to allow what's called PACE financing. PACE is a property assessed clean energy program. It is allowed through California state law. Essentially, what it does is provide either governmental or private investors to issue bonds for clean energy initiatives, then the bonds are used to pay for retrofits as far as solar, upgrading water conservation and energy issues. And then to pay off the bonds, the lien, liens are attached to the property and then recovered through property tax assessments. It's a purely voluntary program through property owners, and we have a couple of commercial, a commercial property owner on a couple of sites, who is looking to do this to upgrade his energy programs on his site. It requires city council approval, because it's a pass-through onto the property tax to pay off the bond.
Move the item. So, is this like a after-the-fact voluntary Melrose program?
Basically, yeah. And basically, it puts a property tax lien on that property, you know, there's some discussion that maybe this isn't the best thing for residential property owners, because it encumbers the property, makes it difficult to sell and deal with financing, but somebody that has a commercial property that is gonna hold on to it for the foreseeable future, typically these things run about 20 years. It applies either way, it's just, there's, there is some philosophical discussion in some economic journals and trade journals, that this, there may be some residential repercussions on these programs.
Yeah, is there any current actual demand for this, or is this just a license to go and market themselves?
The reason this, this is before you is, is we have a commercial property who is asking for us and has put this, you know, has asked staff to bring this forward, so he can finance his solar panels on his roof.
And there's no skin off our back.
There is, there is no encumbrance, no cost to us.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion about this? Any questions? Okay, is there any opposition? No opposition? Okay, it's approved.
Thank you.
Are there any reports of councilmen?
Yes, I have one. I had a complaint from a resident regarding the property right behind city hall. Apparently, I've actually observed it once, maybe Dr. Daly can attest to this, because he drives down, is it Lawton?
Lawton.
Apparently, there's just a lot of trash accumulating on this property, for some reason. Yeah, the vacant lot, and I guess it's, part of it is actually the, on the city side, I'm sure because the tree, I mean, not on the city side, but meaning on the side of it, that's visible, because the other side is the trees, so. A combination of everything, so I've actually observed it once, have you gotten any complaints?
No.
That you are aware of?
Well, because Bob Stewart is, he went out and cleaned up the cottonwood trees.
Yeah, but it's not the trees, apparently it's just trash and derby, just stuff, people are either dumping or.
I saw one sofa, yes.
Okay.
Let me double check on that, yes.
So, okay, so you're aware of it, and if it, if it happens.
We got the sofa, and we can have code enforcement.
Well, apparently this person says she called code enforcement, she wasn't satisfied with their answer, whatever that means. So, anyway, just bring it up to your attention, I, I know that the property owner is responsible, I'm not sure what else to say.
I have a question as well, I've had several people complain to me, and now I've experienced it myself, and that is particularly in the morning or during rush hour, morning or evening. The I-10 Mountain View exchange is a mess. And, I don't know, it's probably two or three weeks ago, I was backed up in traffic before Redlands Boulevard, and I could see that there were semis trying to exit, and then there's too many trying to get off.
Yes.
and they blocked the whole thing.
Yes, right now, because we have a lot of truck traffic that go to the, uh, Amazon.
Well, yeah, not only Amazon, but there's all kinds of other-
It's a bunch of, a new Teal Cup building to come up, and, 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 you know, the IVDA is trying very hard to wind the street.
Yeah, but I think the issue right now is the signal is messed up, and it's backing up. It's, it's, it's not smart, because I remember there's times where I've gotten off the freeway at Mountain View, there's no traffic, and yet we sit there for like two minutes, and clearly, should at least be triggered, because in fact, there's no traffic.
It's a Caltrans signal.
Yeah, well, we, we can't just say it, it's Caltrans, we have to do something about it.
Well, we can talk to the Caltrans guy. Can you talk to Bassem or whatever, whoever? Bassem's gone, who's the new guy? Yeah.
Because somebody, and, and it's, it's predictable.
Yes.
It's not an occasional issue, and I don't know if there's a additional traffic study.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that when the intersection of Anderson and I-ten completed this summer, that will improve the Mountain View.
But I think the signal is messed up, it, 'cause it wasn't always like this, and I, I know that there's traffic from Amazon, what have you, but clearly, something's a mess, because it's, it's causing backups all the way on the off-ramp, and all the way on the Monteside, and sometimes even all the, on the San Bernardino side, so it's all around.
Jarv, is it your recollection that Sandbag has the Mountain View interchange redo? Is it above the cut line or below the cut line on the Measure I funds? Because they might, they might redo the nexus study at any time, and this increased utilization would-
Yeah, but we, we down pretty low.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is, we just got the money for I-ten Tippecanoe interchange, so that's why we can have-
We, we just-
Yeah, but they don't, they don't, uh, they don't care about what you've recently got, it's based on traffic flows and-
Yes, and, and a local match. And, and so for that intersection, Mountain View, the, the south half, which is fifty percent, is Loma Linda. And the quarter, see the Redlands, and another quarter is, is San Bernardino, so it's-
Yeah, but they might change the nexus study the next time around to reflect the massive development on the northern side.
If, if you can, if you, we have more pool than I am at, at the, at the Sandbag Board, so.
I, we, we discussed this at the IVDA, because it's a project that we really wanna get done, we anticipate Mountain View is just becoming busier.
Reconstructing the interchange?
Yes, including the, and they reminded me that Sandbag covers most of the county, and that, that off-ramp is like number twenty-three or something like that, and there's a bunch of other intersections.
I think last time I saw it was about number nineteen, something. It's gone, it's moved up, I don't, I don't even know how, but I saw it recently.
They're saying, based on that system, you're looking at a decade, if not longer. So, unless we need to figure out a way to put some more pressure on them, and emphasize the importance of it.
Well, what we need is a new nexus study, so what, what they do is they, they reshuffle the deck and find out what's the most needed, and that one has clearly gone up in need, and I think if they redid the nexus, it would move up.
IVDA already has three million dollars put aside for redesigning at least portions of Mountain View. It doesn't actually goes off to the off-ramp, but they're, you know, they helped us with, um, Tippecanoe, so they're more than willing to help us with that, but we would need federal funding, clearly, so.
Well, if you can look into it, it is a mess.
Yeah, well, Sandbag's really good at getting all the other funding, we just have to come up with the match. And I think we should probably put aside money from the VA project and the medical center project, 'cause we're gonna be getting development funds for that, and just plan on it. No, what the, we would only have to come up with a small portion of that.
Right, for, for Anderson Tippecanoe, ours was six million, close to seven million.
Yeah.
But the, the, uh, since we kinda co-own that interchange with, uh, San Bernardino, they're not, they don't have any money to come up with for their shares, right, so is this kind of a moot discussion?
No, we, with, with Sandbag, you have to keep plugging, you have to keep pushing, and, and I-ten Tippecanoe, I have been working that, on that for, for sixteen years, so, for seventeen years now, so it's been a long time, so.
And they're on, on schedule?
On that one, yes. Yes, they're doing very well.
So, it should be all wrapped up this summer?
Yes, sir.
That'll be nice.
Yes. What they're planning to do is, they're planning to, to, to do, to open the, the westbound off-ramp first.
Yes.
Yes, and as soon as they open that, so they can work on winding the bridge.
Do we have a date from on that?
No, no.
Cause it's looking really close.
Yes, yeah. Yes. Okay, I'd like to shift gear from, from the, the rain to the drought.
Yes. Number eleven. And when, when you learned English, would you pronounce that drought?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Wow. If we look at this, we all miss that one. If you've been reading newspaper, uh, last week, the city of Redlands get fined sixty-one thousand dollar from the state water board, because they didn't meet their, the goal of, for them, it's thirty-six percent, we are thirty-two percent. Oh, yes, yeah. No, no, uh, it is-
They, they sent everybody with a post office Redlands thing, a threat letter, including half of Loma Linda.
What, what happening is, is they want to compare this, this thirty-two percent goal between the, how much water we pump in, in twenty thirteen compared to the twenty fifteen. They ignore the growth, okay? They just want to know, okay, how much water you pump? So, so for the month of May, we pumped, uh, uh, five hundred and fifty-one point nine eight acre-feet in, in two thousand and thirteen, and we pumped three hundred and eighty-six points four acre-feet in twenty, in twenty fifteen. That's how much water we pump. But, the reason we pump, some cities have to pump more, because we have growth here in town. We have the commercial, uh, at a southeast corner of Barton Road and Mountain View, we have hotel, we have the, uh, the apartment, and, and, and the gas station this past year. And so, we, we, we explained, yes, our resident do reduce the, the water consumption. RGPCD is stand for residential gallon per capita day. We reduce that a lot. So, this table down here, this graph down here, it said that, the original rule that the state board sent to us is they said that, okay, your baseline gallon per capita day is two hundred and thirty-six gallon per capita day, that's our baseline. So, in twenty fifteen, you're supposed to reduce that by ten percent, so it's supposed to be two hundred and twelve gallon per capita day. And for twenty twenty, you're supposed to reduce that by twenty percent, so in twenty twenty, you're supposed to be reduced by a hundred to a hundred eighty-eight point eight gallon per capita day. And if we are at thirty-two percent, we're supposed to be at a hundred and sixty point five. Well, if you look at it right now, we are below that. But, they still said, well, too bad, because I only care about how much water we pump out of the ground. So, this is the same problem that, that Redlands have, because they have a lot of growth, all the commercial that they have, so it's gonna be very difficult, if you tell the resident to, you water lawn two days a week, and ignore the commercial, you're still gonna have that problem. So, the reason I'm showing you this is because, right now, we're not doing so well neither. For the month of May, for some reason, it didn't come out very good, for the month of May, we reduced by thirty percent. June, twenty-one percent, July, twenty-eight, August, twenty-three, September, uh, twenty-six, and for October, it's only twenty percent, even though the number, because it's getting closer to winter, our water uses is actually reduced, but it's also reduced back in twenty thirteen also. So, so we are, we are right here. Compared to other, other agency, uh, we, for the past four months, average reduced by seven point five, I mean, twenty-four point five percent, which is still seven and a half percent more than our goal. See, the Redlands down here, they had twenty-five point one percent, so they, they're below by ten and a, ten point nine percent. So, we're not the only city that in trouble, and, and this, they did send us a warning letter, and we respond back, we try, and this is what we have been doing, so we have been, what we have been doing, we have been, uh, reduced by twenty-four and a half percent. City reduced the landscape water by fifty percent. Now, we actually, we reduced it by seventy percent. If you notice, our shrubs in the LMD start dying, it's actually turned brown, and, because we have to reduce water. And, and the city park's brown, it turned green a little bit, because we have the, the rain the past couple of weeks. The only thing that's green right now is baseball field, only the infield, the outfield is all brown. We reformat the water bill, that include the water consumption. For billing period, you see your, your latest water bill, we actually tell you how much water you, you use, and how much water you reduce, or, or increase compared to previous years. And we take back twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, if you've noticed at your, your water bill. I'm happy to say that for the past four months, in my house, I reduced by fifty percent. So, we, we start installing the drought torrent landscape. No, I go to the YMCA, do a show. We do outreach program to the, uh, to, with, to the resident, piggyback with the state. And at the last city council meeting, the city council did approve the grant funding from, uh, from Santa Ana Water Project Authority, or SAPA. And what they're planning to do for us is, is use aerial photo, and actually aerial photo to look at how much people have land in the backyard, how much is the lawn, how much is hardscape, and we actually calculate how much water to use. By doing so, we can check with our finance, look at our bill, and who is using more water than they're supposed to, and it will contact this, this homeowner. Well, good!
Yeah, can you, well, that, that allows you more water, 'cause you got grass. Yeah, but they'll give him more credit for, see, the point is, if you've got what looks like more grass, they give you more allowance. Now, will they also take into account how many people live in the house, because the utilization of the inside water?
Yes.
Now, outside water is typically sixty percent?
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent, so the thirty percent would be based on how many people live there?
Yes.
And seventy percent based on how much-
It's male and female. I'm just joking, because in my house-
I'm outnumbered as well. Seriously, four to one.
So, and, and the latest is, is the state just, just came up with the offer of, of two dollar per square foot for turf removal program up to two thousand dollars. So, that's the, the website that you can log on and apply for that, that grant from the state. No, it just showed before and after.
Now, I noticed on the article that impugned Redlands, there was a statement by the state, whatever the agency is that Jerry Brown created for Brown Lawns. They said, Redlands didn't even fine one person for overutilization, so the message was, did it look like they just went from the bottom of that list? You missed the target by the most, you got the fine, or did they put a little twist in there for places that didn't even find anybody?
Well, we, we don't find anybody neither.
I know we don't, but my point is, Redlands, Redlands got a sixty thousand dollar fine, partly from their statement, because they never find anybody. So, should we all take a fifty cent fine? You know, what, what should we do to, to reduce our visibility to the state?
Yes, what we did, what we did is, I signed in with the big boy, Santa Ana Water Project Authority, so now they are the one who helping us to push the state.
Does that impress the state?
Yes. We went to the, we went to the workshop, we went to the workshop, and the guy said, well, so far, the one that signed up, Helmut was, was, was the one the city that get, get close to get fined, and then when they signed it for this program, the state dropped it, so.
Oh. Well, that's a good sign.
So, I did.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the nature of the fine? I've been out of town, so I haven't read the Redlands article, is this a, uh, when could they be fined again? What kind of expectations were put upon them to avoid further fining and so forth?
The state can fine up to a thousand dollar per, ten thousand dollar per day.
And they did five hundred?
They did five hundred for the past two month.
For four months?
Four months, four months. For, for Redlands and Beverly Hill, and, and so. And, and they didn't give the warning letter, they, before this, you know, they gave us warning letter, but then, to my surprise, boom, Redlands get fined, and it-
You notice they also did high utilization in rich communities, so let's stress our low per capita income, because we have so many students.
Yeah, they don't look at the capita, so. That, that's in my report, uh, we are trying, we, we are trying to, uh, to conserve, but come next summer, when the VA outpatient clinics open, we're really gonna be in trouble. Hopefully, with El Nino, we fill up the basin, but they say that one winter storm is not enough to fill up the basin. And our base is doing very well, to let you know that, but because we are statewide, we have to follow the rule, to whole state.
Clearly, we aren't the only city that believes that we're disadvantaged by the formula. So, what kind of appeal process is there, and I'm assuming there's a consortium of cities that say, fix your formulas, so that there's some fairness to this?
We, we did. At, at the beginning, our percentage was thirty-six percent. And we appeal, and it reduced it down to thirty-two percent.
Part of what I'm saying is, is when they don't take into consideration population growth or major industries like, uh, like this new, uh, VA clinic that's going in. I mean, there has to be other cities that are suffering as we are.
Unfortunately, we might have to go just like RDA, is, is hire an attorney and, and, and start suing them.
So, what is, what does the city of industry do? You know, their per capita is about five million gallons. 'Cause they've got all that industry and twelve people that live there, so.
But, but they don't count the per capita, they only care about how much water you pump.
That, and that's my point, exactly, I mean, that's an overly simplistic formula that's, that's borders on the ridiculous. Not that they care what a city councilman from Loma Linda thinks, but, but I can't believe there's not some groundswell of frustration being expressed.
It, it's just like the RDA issues, and we- Now, one thing that we don't do, which I'm not planning to do, is, is to increase the water rate, just because our revenue come down, but our overheads are the same. I'll be using, I try to balance the budget with what we have. Poor resident in the city of Highland is, I'm, I'm pointing at the captain, because he live in Highland. They have the water rate increases because, because what happening is, you, you hear on the news that some city water agency increased the rate, because they ask the resident to conserve water, but their overheads are the same, so to be able to bring the revenue up, they increase the rate. But what's so bad about it, I'm gonna get myself in trouble, they increase the rate, but, but when the drought gone, the stop, are they gonna go back and, and reduce the rate? I, I doubt it, but, yeah. So, what we did four years ago by, by replacing the water meters with, with the rad, radometer that have correct meeting, I mean, measured the, the water amount, I think is the best thing that we did, and, and.
And I'm questioning whether that was the best thing, because suddenly, it looked like we were, in my house, we were using a lot more water after you changed the meter. So, I think you elevated our numbers there.
You, no, because it was the pump, it's how the pump that matters, not how much you charge for.
Yes, yes, how much we actually pump from the ground.
So, and, and help yourself to all of that savings for all those years. We'll let you keep the money.
That's in my report for number eleven. Number twelve, we plan to have a Christmas tree lighting on, on December seventh at five o'clock. Will be at the front, right here. And, and number thirteen, we, pardon me? No, we probably gonna put the, the plywood down for you. No, the trees is doing good.
That tree has grown so much.
Yes, the tree's doing good.
It's gonna spread out over the street if it keeps growing as fast as it does.
Now, the next item is number thirteen, I would like to request to have a, a meeting on November- Now, the next item is number thirteen. I would like to request to have a, a meeting on November the twenty-fourth. We're gonna have a public hearing on the sewer rate increase. Hold on. It's a pass-through rate increase because our sewer go through the city of San Bernardino Sewer Treatment Plant and they are gonna increase the rate by a one dollar per month, uh, starting January. So, it's a pass-through. But because of Prop, uh, two-eighteen, we have to go through the mailing and, and, and go through the process. And that will be for November twenty-fourth.
That will be a short meeting, we hope.
Yes.
Okay. Who will not be here the week of Thanksgiving? Everybody's here, okay. Okay, that's it for the city council agenda. We still have the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? I see no takers. The consent calendar is there. Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Chair and member reports, reports of officers. We're adjourned. Bye-bye.